Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the January 6, 2020 city council meeting. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Christina, can you call the roll?
Yes. Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Call?
Here.
Parsons?
Hello?
Mayor Lumber?
Here.
Okay, first item is to approve the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or if not all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have three sets of minutes to approve: the December 12 briefing meeting, December 16 regular meeting, and December 19 special meeting. If I can have a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The bills and claims are listed, the bills from 12/31/19 and the bills in January of 2020, trying to separate the calendar year bills, I assume. So if I can have a motion to approve both sets of bills.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bring down to the section of anybody from the public wanting to address the council at this time. May do so.
All right, I have to do my name and address, is that right? Okay, Stephanie McKenna, 900 Lakota Avenue. I just want to thank the council for the sidewalk plans in the core part of town. While I no longer live in the core part of town, I grew up there, and my parents still reside in that part of town. And I often take my three children to walk to her house, and I am so thankful that you all are putting sidewalks in, so I feel safer with my three young children. And I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very kind of you. Hopefully, by the time he or she is old enough to walk, we'll have a sidewalk in there.
I hope so.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Anyone else? I should know whether it's a boy or a girl, but as my wife and daughter would...
Thank.
I was gonna assume that, but then if I screwed that up, I'd be in real trouble. Sorry. Yes?
Do I have to hold it down? Okay. I'm Diane Henson. Actually, I'm related to that young lady and that grand... and that cute little girl. I want to reiterate what she said. I've lived in Brandon for 28 years, in the core area, and I am excited that you are including sidewalks in the project that's coming up. My only regret is it's gonna take two years, and I would love to see them sooner than later. I have a job where I work eight hours a day from my home, and my office faces the street. And I... and on Third Avenue where I live, it's a direct route to Brandon Elementary, and I see kids walking in the street all the time. And it excites me to think that they're gonna have a safer place to walk in the future. So I just want to say again what Stephanie said, thank you very much. And I know you've probably seen lots of people who are against it, or some people that are very vocal about the project, and I just wanted to let you know that there are people like me who are very in favor of it.
Thanks, ma'am.
Very good. Anyone else? It's refreshing to have a good news report like that. We truly do value it. Moving forward, we have a public hearing on the transfer of on... or off-sale, on... off-sale liquor license and on and off-sale malt beverage license from I-90 Fuel Services to Holiday Station Stores LLC. Can we take care of both those at the same time?
Correct.
If I could have a motion to approve that transfer?
I'm gonna...
Transfers?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the on-sale liquor license and on and off-sale malt beverage and wine license from I-90 Fuel Services Inc. to Holiday Station Stores LLC. Any questions? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Troy Larson from the Lewis and Clark Regional Water System to speak to us. Thank you, Troy, for attending our meeting and...
Thank you for the invitation, and let me say, I've been to a lot of council meetings. I don't know if this is how normally it works, but wow, what... you guys are doing a great job having people get up and say thank you.
No.
It's not normally.
It's not normal.
Wow.
I caught a good... This is a special day.
This is... well, well, it's a pleasure for me to be here. Thank you for the invite. I'm the executive director of Lewis and Clark Regional Water System. I'm entering my 17th year, and I'm mainly here to answer any questions you may have. I understand kind of the main focus is on what we are calling Lewis and Clark II. So I don't know if you want me to start there, if you just want me to yield the floor for questions, or how you'd like me to proceed.
We were presented at our tables tonight kind of a history of Brandon, how it related to Lewis and Clark, and it was very informative to me, having just taken over as mayor, and I appreciate that back information. So I think we have that. So if you wanted to just take off on Lewis and Clark II, I think that would be very appropriate.
Okay.
Where that is and where it's going.
So Lewis and Clark, as you may know, involves 20 cities and rural water systems. We're a wholesale provider of water to those members. Those 20 members have reserved a cumulative 45 million gallons a day, with Sioux Falls being the biggest chunk of that. That's 28 million gallons out of the 45. But the Bureau of Reclamation, which is the governing agency that administers the construction of Lewis and Clark, allowed us to build in some future expansion. So even though 45 million gallons a day is the cumulative reserve capacity, the infrastructure we are building allows us to expand in the future up to 60 million gallons a day. So there's 15 million gallons of expansion built in. Now, whenever we do expand, that expansion is at the entire... the entirety of that cost is to the members that choose to participate. It's a voluntary expansion, because the current system we are building, the 45 MGD, is 80-10-10. 80% federal funding, 10% from the states, and 10% from the members. So there's a huge cost share involved in that. But to expand from 45 to 60, there is no cost share. That's entirely on the member's shoulders. And each member is entitled to their proportional share of that expansion. And so Sioux Falls would be entitled to roughly 40% of that 15 million, for example, if they so cho... chose to participate. The reason I start there is we are currently focused on getting estimates from our engineers on what exactly the infrastructure is that we need, and how much it will cost to expand from 45 to 60. That is needed, so we then know what is needed for what we are calling Lewis and Clark II. Hopefully, we can come up a better term than that, but for now, that's what we're calling it. Lewis and Clark II would be an expansion beyond 60 million gallons. So again, we're currently building for 45 with the ability to expand to 60. And our engineers anticipated having the estimates to us at our January board meeting, but I found out today it's gonna be the February board meeting, on the cost to expand to 60 MGD. Once we find that out, the engineers will then start working on what does Lewis and Clark II look like, which again would be an expansion beyond 60 million gallons. Now, there is no opportunity for non-members like Brandon to participate in the expansion between 45 and 60. There may be an opportunity for Brandon and other communities to participate beyond 60 million gallons, again, what we're calling Lewis and Clark II. We are so early in the discussion stages, we simply cannot say at this point how Lewis and Clark II would look like, how it'd be, you know, organized. Is it simply an extension of what we currently have? Is it something separate? But the reason we're pushing this now is we have members such as Harrisburg who know that based on the amount of water they reserved, Lewis and Clark won't hold them very long. They need more water beyond, say, 20 years. So they need to start now planning for what is... what do they do next? And is Lewis and Clark II part of that planning, or should they plan to do something else? So that's what's driving this discussion now. Even though we're not even completed with what we have, you'll see up on the map, we still have the dotted blue pipeline to build, the green line is being constructed. We're 82% complete. So it kind of seems strange to be talking about beyond Lewis and Clark when we're not even done with what we have. But that's what's driving it, is the need for more guaranteed water. And I've had various inquiries from city officials or citizens in the past, Brandon, whether they can participate in Lewis and Clark now. And you could, and we would welcome you, but it would be non-guaranteed water. All the water we have has been spoken for. So think of it as a timeshare. You can't buy the timeshare, but you could use it if no one else is using it. And Brandon would be responsible for all the costs to connect to Lewis and Clark, and I have no idea what those costs would be, other than I know it'd be a lot, and you would have a non-guaranteed source of water. The next 10, 15, maybe 20 years, probably plenty of water that wouldn't be used, but then after that, probably it'd be an issue. So that's kind of a little bit of the back and forth of discussions that have taken place in the... in the past. Did that kind of cover what you were looking for? Is there any follow-up questions that you have?
One question I had, Troy, was you spoke initially about the 80-10-10, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just recalling, obviously, I wasn't in this business at the time, but I remember the federal match was pre-funded by the local entities. Has that federal match come through?
Good question.
As anticipated, I guess I'll say.
What the mayor is referring to is the three states and the 20 members prepaid their share of the project. The federal government's share is about 62% that they've paid. So they are still coming through with their funding. The funding, as of late, has increased. Several years ago, we were getting like 2, 3 million a year, and then it got up to 9 million. The last two years, we've gotten in the 15 million range, and for FY '20, we expect it'll be in the 18 million range. We've been as high as 27 million. So the federal funding has been steady, but certainly we could always use more.
So Troy, where does the water from Lewis and Clark come from?
Good question. If you look on that map, at the very southern part is, although it's not noted, that's where Vermillion is at. And our well field is actually just a bit southwest of Vermillion. If you've been down to that area, there's a bridge called the Vermillion Newcastle Bridge that goes into Nebraska. Our primary well field is on the South Dakota side of that bridge. So just to the north of the Vermillion Newcastle Bridge is land owned by Gamefish and Parks. We have a permanent easement for our main well field there. So it's a series of wells that we utilize. We do not have an intake into the river. That's one of the misnomers of Lewis and Clark, is we suck water right out of the river. It's a series of wells adjacent to the Missouri River that tap into an aquifer.
So we've had some discussions about our aquifers. Are they recharging? Have you had any issues with yours? Because, you know, if you're gonna pick up another, I don't know how many million gallons, it's a lot of water. Any concern on that on your part?
In terms of the capacity of the wells?
On recharge... are your aquifers recharging, and will there be a supply?
Yeah, that's a good question. Our aquifer is basically recharged by the river. Our wells are... if you have a... if you don't have a bad rotator cuff like me, you could throw a rock from our wells and go into the river. That's how close we are to the river. And so, yes, our... people have said, what if you... what if your wells go dry? For our wells to go dry, first the Missouri River would have to go dry. So we... we have very confident in the ability of our wells to be sustainable in the long term.
I guess my only question is, is when would you anticipate as far as years down the road for this Lewis and Clark II? And would you anticipate any federal funding for that to be available?
It's a good question. I anticipated having that question thrown at me, and I wish I had a good answer. I'm not trying to be coy here, but we don't even know when that expansion from 45 to 60 MGD would take place. My guess is that's probably a 15, maybe a little longer period. Lewis and Clark II, maybe 20 years? That's pure speculation. I'm just gut-shot in it there. So I... if you're asking me for a guess, I would say probably 20 years. But I think the plan is to make sure we know what we're doing well before that. Even though that might not be until when we actually start putting infrastructure in the ground, members need to know sooner what the plan is. So I would hope in the next five years or less, we will know what the plan is going forward. And maybe that is addressing more your question of when you kind of plan to have your ducks in a row. And was there a second part to that question?
Would you anticipate federal funding for something?
Oh, good question. The preliminary meeting we had was to go forward with the assumption that there would be no federal funding. And the reason for that is we can control the schedule instead of relying on the feds. That being said, once we see the price tag and how much it would cost, we... we are not eliminating the possibility of going back and possibly seeking additional funding. It's not to say they'd say yes, but... so the current plan is no, but we're not taking our finger off that checker.
So if we wanted to stay in contact with you on the possibility that we might be interested in number two, how do we do that?
And you already have Kevin Smith, who you guys know well. And who else was with you?
Del DeBoer.
Del DeBoer had came in and met with us just to talk conceptually, and they've asked to... for us to let them know whenever there are any future meetings about Lewis and Clark II. So far, there's only been one, but we will certainly notify them of any future meetings. And of course, anyone, Brian or whoever else wants to participate is certainly welcome to. Because, yeah, we... you know, if this ever would come to fruition, we want to make sure Brandon is a part of the discussion all the way through. So, yeah, it's important to have that communication.
Currently, let's say Lewis and Clark I. Let's... I'm looking at the map up there, going to Word, and I would assume that the line that is running on the interstate?
Not on the interstate. It's south of the interstate. We go right by Adrian, if you're familiar with where Adrian's at.
Right.
So Adrian is just off the interstate, so we're pretty close to the interstate.
Where does the pipeline go in... with respect to Brandon? I guess I'm gonna say, is it anywhere close to Brandon right now?
I believe when I was asked before that you guys are within about five miles of our pipeline, which... I don't know, Kevin, if you can point where Brandon is on the map there. It would be east of the turnoff to MCWC. So that six-mile road, that north to MCWC is six-mile road. So if you can visualize where Brandon is in relation to six-mile road. But my recollection is a person in our office did a Google map, and it was basically five miles from the southern part of your city limits. It's my recollection.
So that would be the infrastructure, that five-mile stretch?
Correct.
That would need to transpire for Brandon to hook up to that.
Correct.
I was just thinking about your scenario of unused water currently.
Right.
Not guaranteed, but...
Right.
We'd be...
That would be your investment for a non-guaranteed source of water. And then we've also shared with people that have called that, you know, MCWC is right outside of town. They are a member of Lewis and Clark, and I understand there's been at least some preliminary discussions with them as well on a guaranteed source of water. Although MCWC, I don't think has the quantity that Brandon is looking for, but it might help. But, yeah, it's... you know, it's... hindsight's 20-20. None of us were around then. I wasn't around then. But Brandon would have been an outstanding member of Lewis and Clark. It would have been a perfect fit. We were basically going by, and it would have been a huge benefit to the city. And frankly, Brandon would have been a huge benefit to Lewis and Clark. It would have been a great partnership. But now, all we can do is look forward, and what's the next best decision that we can make. And if Lewis and Clark can somehow be a part of that equation, we're happy to continue those discussions.
That would be our mantra also. Any other questions from the council administration?
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming. Side there. There you go.
All right, I just want to say thank you, Troy, for coming out. I really appreciate it. Like I said, I think we all on the council here and the mayor, I can safely probably say that we all just want to be proactive to this. So even though it's a ways out, I just think we need to look at what's best for our community. So thank you for taking the time and educating us on this.
You're welcome. Thanks for reaching out to me. Appreciate it.
Very good. Okay. Moving forward to our agenda, we have a second reading of ordinance 598, which is the ambulance services ordinance. We talked a little bit in the briefing meeting of some proposed alternative changes to that ordinance, Brian?
Correct. I met with MedStar Friday morning, reviewed those suggested changes with MedStar. He's still uncomfortable with those, so there's still some differences that I think we need to work out. Therefore, you know, my January... my memo of January 3rd suggests having a work session with MedStar so that we can sit down face-to-face and discuss those differences. I would recommend, if you want to do that, that the meeting take place sometime in the next week, week and a half, so that we can have a resolution for this on the January 20th meeting. You know, it's my opinion that if we move forward without language or under the current language, that we do risk the loss of our ambulance service.
Can I just...
You done, Brian?
Mm-hmm. I just want to remind the council, I went back and reviewed my notes. This would be... Brian and I and Brett started on this process February last year. And when we met, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the goals that we wanted to accomplish was we wanted to look at the definitions, which we did, updated those, because there basically were none. We wanted to include some quality control definitions, because there really weren't any. We wanted to further define the medical director duties, because that was very vague. And we wanted to update a more accurate and reasonable response time, which we did. We also laid out more detailed licensee duties, and we wanted to make sure that whatever ordinance was passed, that the council would make a note to tell staff we wanted these things followed. We wanted a application done. We wanted the ordinance followed. And I think that was all agreed upon when we met, too. We did... I do not recall that we addressed the level of service topic. We did address that should more money be requested from whatever ambulance service there is, that we would recommend that we do a RFP if it went above and beyond the 50,000. So based on all those things, I believe that we accomplished our goals we set out to do. As I stated, we did not address the level of service topic, but if I'm understanding the timelines, if we... and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, if we pass something tonight and then did a work session, we're gonna delay this a month, about?
Well, if you... if you pass the second reading tonight, it would be published next week, which is the 15th, I believe. It would go into effect February 15th.
Oh.
If... I don't have a calendar in front of me at the moment. But if you wanted then have a work session and make tweaks, the ordinance process would start over. So it would take two readings, publication. So we'd be looking at, you know, at least a month and a half to two months past that.
I guess where I'm going is, I feel as though when this little committee met, it took us a while to get this done. We're getting close. If it takes us, my words, compromising and having a work session now so that we could get something done sooner, I would certainly support that.
The flip side of that, we could also get something passed and have a work session and then make tweaks without having to start completely back over with the first reading. My concern is, we've had this done for about eight months, and it's just kind of sat there. It's so overdue. And I understand what you're saying about the level of service, but when I look back at the ordinance that we have now that goes back like a decade, those requirements for level of service are already defined as the paramedic and an EMT, and we haven't changed that. Now, the redlined... I'm not a fan of what's in here, because it's got some added language in here since we talked Thursday that defines what happens after a couple rigs have been dispatched. And I could see why our provider maybe wouldn't like those. In one regard, it's a bit too lenient, I think, for our residents, but it's also a bit restrictive for our vendor. And by that, I mean, it's saying that if two rigs are out, then we're okay with two EMTs. That's kind of setting a precedent, saying anytime you have two rigs out, City Brandon's okay with no longer having ALS service provided to our residents. And then on our vendor's side, it's restrictive to him, because as we talked Thursday, we do want there to be some discretion used in those rare situations where we want somebody to be grabbed and taken to the hospital. Well, he can't do that if we say, "You can't do that unless you have two EMTs." So I think we're being too restrictive. I'm much more in favor of doing the option number two that Lisa came up with, that allows him the ability to come to us with those rare occurrences. And if I recall correctly, he said there's only been two of them in the last two years. And if he does an average of 400 calls a year, we're talking 1/4 of 1%. So I don't feel like we should be down in the weeds hashing out an ordinance for 1/4 of 1% of the time. So I would be totally in favor of doing a work session, but we've just kicked this can down the road so long and have nothing in place. I would make a motion that we move forward with the second reading, using Lisa's option number two that has the words in it, numerous runs being dispatched at the same time. And having a work session after.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Further discussion?
I just think we need to... I said this before, and I'll say it again. We're up here to do what's best for our citizens and the community. We should be writing this ambulance ordinance for our citizens. Basically, this is a life-or-death situation. These are our friends, our family, our neighbors, right? And we want the best care for them. And if that's what the ordinance said 10 years ago, and we're kind of saying the same thing, I think we just need to pass the ordinance, have something in place for our citizens, and stop stalling. I think this... what Chuck wrote up, I like the ordinance. I think we just need to get something passed.
I think rather than getting something passed, I kind of like the idea of the work session, so that we can get it down on paper the first time and get it right. And I don't... I don't know, I'd like an opinion from...
Well, I would say if we do a work session, then are we gonna open it up and maybe have a third party anal... you know, analyst come in and look at... we're just getting one private business owner's point of view. If we're looking for... writing this for our citizens, I think we owe them all possible options that are out there, and not just one-sided view. owe them all possible options that are out there and not just one-sided view or one perspective. I think we would owe it to them to maybe open up and see what other ambulance services have to say or.
I think at that point, you're going into RFPs and dragging this out a lot longer. You're just saying, just delay it for a work session.
I would go with Brian's recommendation, yes. I guess I'm willing to make that compromise.
Chuck, you're talking about starting all the way back over with the first reading. And if we make any changes other than small, we have to start completely back over, right, Lisa?
Yeah.
And I guess my other point is, you know, we've started this over a year ago and this was pretty much done eight months ago. Why we're on a second reading and deciding that a work session is needing, needed, it just baffles me. And I get the memo talks specifically about the staffing requirements, which Lisa's option number two provides a very solid accommodation for that, which is more lenient than how it sits right now with our old ordinance.
What's the point of the work session, I guess is my question?
I think it would be a very good idea for you and MedStar, the council and MedStar, to sit down face to face to discuss your concerns and his concerns with the staffing levels. To me, it doesn't make much sense to pass an ordinance with the intent on changing it in another month or two. Makes much more sense to take two extra weeks, meet with the vendor, and iron out those differences if it's possible than adopt something that you fully intend to change in the future.
And I don't disagree with you on that, Brian. I will say, though, that I am disappointed that we haven't had this opportunity to do this before with the vendor. And we have asked him for discussion points. So I'm willing to go along with that, but know that, you know, he's had ample opportunity and he keeps putting you in the middle. And I don't appreciate that either. So hopefully he'll get that message.
Yeah, no, talking with Mr. Major on Friday, he's more than willing to come into a work session. We talked about a work session, actually, he wanted to come into the next briefing meeting. But there may come a point in time where the council may want to see some proprietary data. So I thought it would be much more prudent to do it at a work session where if you want to, the council can go into executive session, discuss those items that are proprietary instead of at a work session, which historically, we have not done an exec session in.
I was informed he'd be here tonight.
I thought he would be.
Other comments, questions? From my standpoint, it seems that it would make sense for us to try to sit down with our current vendor and hash out the implied differences. Brian, having met with our current vendor, he expressed some differences. And I hear your point of view, Barb, that we've been kind of trying to get to that point prior to this and haven't gotten there. But the whole scheme of things, I also agree with you, Barb, that it seems that a work session probably wouldn't be the worst thing to accomplish right now.
So Brian, just to clarify, we have this work session, and we have to start over and do the first reading, second reading?
No, because in my opinion, the only thing that you need to have a work session on is that section regarding staffing.
You didn't redoing the whole thing?
No.
Yeah.
And we're already up in the air on that. I'll call the question. Christina, call the rule.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Yep.
Jorgensen?
Nay.
Call?
Nope.
Parsons?
Aye.
Motion fails four to two.
So just to be clear, my vote is a nay because I'm willing to give him a second chance to come in here. But I certainly agree with Dana and Vicky that this thing has been kicked down the road too long. So let's hope that this solves it. And if he doesn't participate, then I think we just move forward.
Correct. With that being said, Brian, I'll rely, will rely on the administration to set up a.
And we'll talk to MedStar tomorrow and get a date.
One thing I would like to appreciate is, it wasn't just a heads up, more communication with the staff. I want to learn. I'm here, this is my first time in government, right? And I want to learn. But I also would like an open communication and just given my options. I wasn't, I didn't see all this stuff. The package just said it was revised. I didn't realize that MedStar was asking for a work session. It wasn't brought up. We all have other full-time jobs. And I'm sorry, I wasn't able to read 118 pages this weekend. So that's the only thing I would ask. I know you guys know your stuff and I appreciate it. And I want to learn from you guys. But if, just a heads up next time, when it was sent out on Friday, hey, just to let you know, this email was sent because I didn't get anything, like as an email. This would be appreciated because I just want to learn and help any way I can.
Very good. I would agree with that. It was a little bit of blind luck that I saw it, especially me that can't see or hear going through it. But yes.
You got a driver's license?
Maybe I shouldn't have one. Yeah. Moving on, our golf course, we have a golf course manager job description that we need to approve, as laid out by the administration. If I could have a motion for that?
Go move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the golf course manager job description as presented. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two under the golf course is to appoint Andrew Bauer as the golf course manager for 2020 at a salary of $51,979 annually. Can I have a motion to approve that?
I would make a motion to approve and just note the title there.
I would second that. Goffle.
The goffle?
Not sure what that is.
No, that's his title.
See, I'm not the only one, Brian.
At least he's had gopher.
You lost me. Did I get a second there?
Yeah.
Okay. A motion to a second to approve Andrew Bauer as the golf course manager for 2020 at $51,979 annually. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Recs, we have a work report and also have an ash tree plan of attack. Devin, do you want to quickly go over that report that you gave the council on the ash tree plan, just for the public's sake?
Yeah, we've been kind of going through our tree ordinance and trying to come up with a plan on how we're going to deal with the Emerald Ash Bore that is in Sioux Falls and more than likely coming this way sooner than we all want. Basically, what our ash tree guidelines state is that the city is going to be responsible for all park trees, city trees, street boulevard trees, things of that nature, unless it's a, the homeowner chooses to treat the tree, that's going to be at the homeowner's expense. And then they will have to register that with us so that we have documentation of who's treating it, who's not. Are they keeping up with their treatments like they're supposed to? Things of that nature. And it gets into a little bit of disposals, things like that, too. So it's just some bare bones, basic guidelines on how we're going to try to deal with the issue. We have already started removing ash trees in parks this winter. That's going to be an ongoing project for the next few years, basically. As time allows, we'll keep tackling it and see how we do.
Were you stashing them out then?
Right now, we started mostly in Pioneer Park. That's a pretty manageable one. Our plan is to, we're dragging them down below to the parking lot. And with the help of the fire department, we're going to burn them at some point this winter. And then same at Aspen, we have a rather large pile south of the park there, too.
So the residential part of removal wouldn't be for a few years?
That won't start, yeah, not for a little while yet. We've still got some things to kind of hash out and tweak with that.
And a plan for the dissemination to our residents of this plan, water bills, that type of, I assume?
We'll probably use our normal stuff. We'll put an article in the paper. We'll get it out on our website. We can put a stuffer in the utility bills.
Very good.
Devin, in the parks, how do you decide what you're going to treat and what you're going to take down? How do you do that?
We're just using our judgment. Most everything is going to get removed. It's just not very feasible to continue to treat. We have a lot of ash trees, which everybody does. We're going to pick out a few specimens that are really nice, large, healthy trees, and we're going to try to treat those. Everything else is more than likely to get removed. And we will do, you know, a large number of replacements, too, over the next few years with a wide variety of tree species.
Very good. Thanks, Devin.
Mm-hmm.
Public safety, we have the monthly police report, inspection report, and the fire department report. Any questions from the council on any of those? If not, first thing in D1, administration, resolution number 1-20, setting the salaries and wages for 2020 of the City Brandon employees. If I can have a motion to approve that listing?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the annual listing of salaries and wages under resolution number 1-20. Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D2, the benefits committee goals. At our briefing meeting, the city council went over some goals that they expected out of the benefits committee to come out with. Any additional items from council members?
Just kind of clarify what, I asked for this to be on here because we've hashed this topic out a lot the last couple of years and before that as well. I just want to make sure that we're making good use of our time. We're about four months out from being able to give direction to our agent as far as what to quote. So to me, the smartest thing to do in the next four months is to figure out priorities. Because there's a lot of different variables, such as the deductibles and the plan choices. If it's a network or not a network, if there's deductible buybacks, if there's premium contributions. There's just a lot of moving parts. And in years past, I don't think we've ever given any real clear direction to the agent what to quote. So it's been a bit of a wild guess of where to land. So my vision is that now that we have an amount, which I clarified with Christina's $567,000 from 218, that we spend our time focusing on those priorities so we can give that direction to our agent in four months. And then he can run with that and come back with what our options are based on those priorities. So it may be that if we really want the premiums to stay extremely low or no cost, what he can show us is, you know, this needs to happen, or we need to look at spousal requirements or what have you. So I guess that's where I'd like to see the focus. But if there's other input, would just like to hear that rather than come back in four months and find out we didn't do what the council expected of us. Because there have been studies done in the past, there's been comparisons with wages and benefits to other communities. To me, I feel like we've been there, done that. But we'll open to whatever the council wants. I know Vicky is, too.
Brian, Christina, you're both coming to those meetings, right? Can I just ask you, can you just, I know that you guys sent us a list, the representative, can you just have the employees just find out, like prioritize what's important to them? I'd like to know before we start. I know Dana knows insurance. It's not me. I just want to know what the employees, what their priorities are, if they can go back and talk, I think we have a representative from every department, right? If they can kind of just say, hey, this is what we're looking for and like prioritize, is it the provider is, I mean, what, if they had to rank it, so to speak?
Yeah.
So I just want their input, like what they want.
And that's what the duties for the departmental reps is to go back and forth to provide input from their fellow staff members as to what their priorities are. And then take that information back, whatever the committee's talking about, and report to their departments as well.
Okay. So I was just thinking, like, before that first meeting, if they could maybe just say, hey, if we have to do our top three priorities, what would be the most important to us? The provider? Or is it, I mean, I don't know, I don't know insurance talks. But I'm just saying, if they could just tell us what of the plan, what do you guys love the most and what do you want to make sure we keep, type of thing. And then that way, when we get down to the numbers and the budget, we at least know the employees want this. Does that make sense? Am I making it? Okay.
So I would just add, Dan, I think I had mentioned to you, discussed the deductible part, you know, the single provider you mentioned. I would like to see if something could be discussed about, if something is decided upon per Vicky's request, if you're ranking things, could things be phased in over a certain period of time? And then could there be some discussion about, if a new employee's getting hired now, Brian, isn't there like a three-year waiting period? Or not a waiting period, but?
Currently, a new employee that wants something other than single coverage, they pay a percentage of the difference between the coverage they choose, whether it's family, couple, or family or employee kids versus the employee premium. They pay a percentage of that for the first three years.
So if that can be discussed, too, I guess we'd appreciate that.
Very good. Item B3, we have a contract with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Go move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the contract with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance as presented. Any questions, comments? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two raffle requests, one from the VFW and one from keeping kids in the outdoor sports.
Correct. And again, these are folks who are holding a raffle, need to notify the city. And the only action that you need to take is if you are opposed to the raffles, you need to make a motion to deny them. Otherwise, if you're okay with them, they just move forward with no action by the council.
Hearing no opposition, we'll continue forward. Item D6 is the audit selection committee. I think it's the briefing committee, the direction to the administration was come forth with a recommendation on the proposals that were received for an audit, which you'll do at the next board meeting.
Correct.
Street Department, we have a job description for the public works, lead public works position. Brian?
This would be another eyes for management, public works director, foreman, and then the lead person would be below the foreman, answering to the foreman. But just give some more eyes and ears, help with direction for the staff in case the foreman's gone, would act in the position of the foreman. We'll be looking at posting this in the public works department and then possibly interviewing if there's enough candidates.
If I can have a motion to approve the new job description?
Go move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the job description for a new position entitled the public works lead position. Any other questions, comments?
We're not adding a FTE.
No, we're not adding FTEs. This would be from existing staff and we would not back full of position.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water and sewer, number one, resolution 02-20, setting the sewer surcharge rate. It's being proposed to reduce the surcharge rate from the current $4.95 a month to a new rate of $3.95 a month, $1 less surcharge rate. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to lower a surcharge rate.
Where are the balloons that we're supposed to drop? Come on, people. Where is the confetti?
Confetti cannon.
Wow.
Besides the elation from the council, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 03-20 is setting of the 2020 water rates.
AE2S is here.
AE2S is here to present a recommendation?
There's study results from regulations before that the resolution is based on.
For the public's sake, we've been through. For the public's sake, we've been through, uh, a number of meetings with AE2S, and, uh, hopefully we're down to final, final copy, final phase.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, good evening, I'm happy to be here, um, like you just said, to go through the final recommendations, uh, from the study. Sorry about that, always have to have technical difficulties. Turn that on. There we go. Now we're ready, okay, thank you. So just briefly to go back and review the objectives, uh, that were laid out when you initiated this study, you wanted to look at a rate design that would target inefficient outdoor water use and incentivize, um, people to use less water. You, as part of that, you would be developing a financial plan to support your, your future revenue requirements, which includes some of the, some different alternatives for your future water treatment options. Um, I, you want to identify approach to reserves, um, for now and into the future, and then adopt, um. What I'm here to talk about primarily tonight is some recommendations for adoption of twenty twenty rates based on where you're going with O and M, uh, your rate funded capital and future debt service. So this is just an overview of that process that we've walked through together. We've had a couple of workshops, um, and today we're at the final review, um, stage. Following this meeting, um, we'll be providing you, um, not tonight, but in the near term, or the near future, um, a, a write-up of the study process and the recommendations. So just briefly, uh, the, the way I've laid this out tonight to go through these final recommendations with you is shown here. I'll talk about the fixed charge recommendations first, talk about the volumetric charge, and then take a look at what those mean for revenue adequacy for your water utility, and what those could look like, um, in the future depending on the direction you take with your future water treatment options. Um, so if we step back for a moment and talk about your rate revenue requirements, um, and just recalling that that is composed of several things. Of course, operation and maintenance are key within that, but as well, um, debt service revenue requirements, as well as any rate funded through capital or cash reserves, is also revenue requirement, and also any contributions that you make to reserves for the future. So these are all, um, the three boxes on the right are what you need your rate schedule to generate revenue for. And you do that currently through a fixed and volumetric charge for all of your users. If we look at your, uh, revenue requirements for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um, I've just grouped them here generally based on your sub-departments in terms of, um, sources of supply through administration. Most of your sal- I believe all of your salaries actually are in the administrative line item. I've also shown here the capital related revenue requirements, which is debt service projected to come online as you take on debt in twenty twenty. You currently have no debt, um, but you are anticipating taking some debt, at least for well number eight, for the purpose of this study. And to be on the conservative side, we did also assume that debt would be taken for that, uh, water tower to be constructed, which may or may not actually, um, create a revenue requirement in twenty twenty, but we have included that. In addition to that is your, the water department's share of the reconstruction project, which is just a transfer, as I understand, out of water and is not, um, actual debt held by the utility. So last time we talked about, a little bit about fixed charges, and I wanted to give you some idea of how we go about designing a fixed rate, what kinds of charges might go into that, and so those in red are what are typically considered when you're going about setting up a, a fixed charge rate design. So, um, administrative charges, um, office expenses, anything related to billing, um, will almost always be included in the fixed charge. In addition, a percentage of labor, um, a percentage, you know, all or, or a hundred percent of debt service may go into the fixed charge. It's not very common for a municipality because, um, that can bring the fixed charge to be kind of high. But these are the types of charges that you would commonly see, um, through your fixed rate. Just taking a quick look at your current fixed rate schedule here, you see that you have an inclining, um, charge as the, as the meter size increases to reflect the, the greater demand that can be drawn by those bigger meters. You see in that third column there, the number of meters by size that you currently have. And then the fourth column is simply the relationship of the charge for each size meter to the, the smallest size meter. You can see in the farthest column, um, the, the number of equivalent meters, that's what we call, um, we multiply the number of meters by the ratio to come up with a total number of equivalent meters, and so that, um, is totaled in that last column. And just for, I want you to note as we move forward that you currently do not have any four or six inch meters in your system. So if we talk about, um, evaluating your current, your current charges, um, taking a look at your twenty nineteen revenue requirements, and, uh, noting that you have a cost for that smallest size meter of seven dollars and eighty-five cents, we can see that it most likely is composed, or it's covering, these are the costs that that seven dollars and eighty-five cents are covering. It's covering thirty-five cents per month for billing related type of costs, a dollar ninety-five for office supplies and miscellaneous, five dollars and fifty-five cents for wages, uh, and that gets you to a total of seven dollars and eighty-five cents. If we look ahead to your revenue requirements for twenty twenty, um, you have that reconstruction debt service transfer that's coming in. And so, um, we said that is a, is a fixed cost, it's, it's both a debt cost in a way, and, but also fixed cost. So we said, for the purpose of design, let's say we try to recoup that, that, um, payment associated with the first round of reconstruction through the meter. So that would come to a dollar fifty-two cents per equivalent meter. Um, you can see the billing related, uh, for supplies and wage, uh, related costs per bill. Um, and they change slightly from year to year as your budget changes. Um, but you, we get a total there of nine dollars and twenty-five cents, which is the suggested, um, change to that, um, that lowest meter charge for, for, um, twenty twenty. I also wanted to note here that, you know, in a, in a perfect world, you know, the best revenue stream is from your fixed charge, because it's stable, you know what you're gonna get every month, doesn't matter how much water you sell. But it's not generally considered to be fair to do it that way, it's very high, or it's very hard on the low, uh, volume users. And so it's, it's typically not done that way, but, but it is prudent to collect, you know, to balance that and collect as much as you can through your fixed charge. And so, um, by making the change that we're suggesting tonight, you will increase the fixed revenue from your meter charges by eighteen percent from that anticipated for twenty nineteen. So here again is just a chart of the recommended fixed monthly charges for twenty nine, twenty twenty, excuse me, by meter size. So you can see for the smallest size meter, it's a dollar forty cents per month, um, additional, um, for the one and a half, it's two dollars and eighty-five cents. And again, I, I wanna point out, you currently do not have any meters at this size, but, um, you keep those on your schedule. Uh, you know, in the event you get a industry or some commercial user coming into town that would, would require that. So if we talk about the, um, the fixed debt surcharge for a moment, so you're gonna be taking as you, as you go through the next year and determine where, the direction you're going to take for your future water treatment project, um, you're going to be incurring some additional debt service for that. So it's very common to, uh, set up a debt surcharge, either on the fixed rate, or on the variable rate, or on both rates, to, uh, that is designed to recover enough revenue annually to meet your annual debt payment. Um, that, you know, helps out with, um, in, in your case, in the past, you have not been required to hold a reserve account for that debt when you have a surcharge in place. So, um, we looked at starting a debt surcharge for twenty nineteen. We elected only to suggest at this time that you include a component, component in your volumetric rate. Um, given that you, we are recommending an O and M based increase in the fixed charge, um, that is the rate that, you know, is hardest on the lowest volume users. So we're suggesting that for twenty twenty, you implement a fixed debt surcharge that will generate about a little over four hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then over time, as you determine your, your, um, your path for treatment, um, we'll suggest you make adjustments for that. So switching to the water, the volumetric rate, um, currently you have a constant block, as you know, where everyone, all water users pay the same price for every, um, thousand gallons of water that they use. Um, the nice thing about that kind of structure is easy for people to understand. Um, the, the negative side of that is it doesn't send a price signal when a person uses, you know, starts to use what might be considered an efficient amount of water use. Um, it doesn't distinguish between water sold on the average day in January versus water sold on the hottest day in July, which is your most expensive water. And so it's not, um, it's not, you know, a great tool for communities facing constant, um, water supply issues. So to illustrate that, this is a graph of your twenty eighteen monthly water sales. And I'm showing here in the upper corner, what we call the peaking factors for, for the different types of user classes. So for single-family residential, um, we calculated a peaking factor of three point two. For multifamily residential, two point oh, and for non-residential users, they peak, um, we found that they peaked in twenty eighteen at least at a factor of one point six. And what that means is their highest use in, in the year divided by their average daily use. And so you can see, a larger peaking factor means that on their biggest day, the, the single-family residential user class used three point two times what they have, what they use on average. And that's illustrated here where you can see, um, I drew this line at your May usage and topped it off at the top of the June usage. So within this vol- this is all water sold in twenty eighteen. Within, between these two lines, ten point six percent of all water for the year was sold. That's very expensive water, because if everybody just sold under this line per year, you would not have had to construct the infrastructure to get up to this peak day. So when you construct, when you invest the money to construct for your peak day water use, but then you don't sell water within this area, you know, for most months of the year, that is a lot of money that's been invested, that has to be recouped somehow, um, but has not seen the water sales. So that's the entire reason for where you're trying to, you know, bring these bars down by encouraging conservation, so you can keep, keep your investment infrastructure as low as possible, um, and sell as much water, you know, up to your capacity as you can, um, to keep the, the cost of the water down. Uh, another illustration of how single-family is, has been, you know, the largest offender as a class and, and is typically in every community, is this is a graph of, um, June twenty eighteen, or, or I'm sorry, twenty eighteen data for, um, single-family residential. And it shows that, and you can see here the percentage of water sales by the single-family residential class as a percentage of the whole through the year. And so I'm sorry, this, uh, red is everybody else, blue is a single-family residential. And you see how in June and July and August, they are much higher, um, than the other classes. In June, in fact, thirty-two percent of the accounts within the city use fifty-eight percent of the water. So again, this is something you've seen before, this is something you're aware of, but it's the reason that we're suggesting that you take a look at a different type of rate structure other than constant block in order to, uh, do a couple of things, to incent the people that are, that are driving that peak in June and July, to maybe cut back a little bit, use a little bit less. And if, if they can't, or they don't want to, um, then just have them pay what that's worth. To a lot of people, you know, to, it, it might be worth, um, paying a little bit extra to keep their lawn green. So what we're suggesting here is that you consider a four-block, inclining-block, uh, volumetric rate for residential users. Uh, where water is, and an inclining block is water is priced in groups, and as the, the, as the vol- as the volume increases, the price increases. So in this example, for the first twelve thousand gallons per month, the price is four fifty-nine, your current constant block. Um, once the individual uses twelve thousand one gallons, they start, the first twelve is still at four fifty-nine, but anything over the twelve is at five seventy-four and so on, um, where the price increases as they move up the block. So recommendations for volumetric approach for all user classes are shown here. For residential units, um, of four or less, and by that I mean fourplexes, triplex, duplex, and single-family, uh, we're, we're recommending one four-tier inclining block. For residential units that have greater than four, fiveplex and greater, uh, most apartment buildings, we're also recommending a four-tier inclining block, but it's going to be structured a little bit differently from the resident, the single-family, uh, residential. For non-residential users, we're also suggesting a four-tier inclining block, which again is going to be different from these others simply because water usage patterns are different. Um, and then for non-residential users that consistently use more than eighty thousand gallons per month, even in the winter, we're suggesting that you can maintain a constant block for those users. The fact that they use a lot of water year-round doesn't mean they're being inefficient, it means that's the water that they need, um, to support their business. And so we're suggesting that you retain that for them. Um, the sprinkler user class, in order to price them, um, the same as irrigation in the residential units, we're suggesting a three-tier, three-tier inclining block, and I'll show you that in a couple slides here. So this is, um, what the twenty twenty recommendation for those residential units of four or less looks like. Again, the first twelve thousand is at four fifty-nine, uh, the second twelve thousand is at five seventy-four, um, and so on. So the basis behind this, again, as we discussed the last time I was here, um, average indoor water use is about four thousand gallons. In order to account for a reasonable amount of lawn watering within that first tier, um, we suggested a, a tier of twelve thousand gallons. That allows within tiers one and two, for an average lot size of ten thousand square feet, to water one inch weekly, assuming a half inch of rainfall in the summer. Um, that's through tier two. So a, a person, you know, if you use four thousand gallons of water inside, even in the summer, there's still eight thousand gallons that can be put out in the yard, on the lawn, on the garden. Um, if, if you wanna do more watering than that, um, the individual would be paying a little bit more than that, um, to do that lawn watering. Through tier three allows for reasonable lawn watering through a twenty thousand square foot lot, um, watering volume at one inch per week. And then we have this fourth tier, which is, um, usage that falls within there is generally considered to be excessive, based on the, our look at the data here, so, um, it's, it's quite a high rate. We don't anticipate that a lot of water use will happen there. The sprinkler accounts I mentioned, um, were tied to the residential use tier, and this, this is how that looks. So because we consider this second tier here, up to twenty-four thousand gallons, to be irrigation, we said, let's make the first tier for the irrigation, um, accounts twenty-four thousand gallons, price at the same as the second tier for residential water users. And then add another twelve thousand for the tier two, and then, um, above that would be, um, a tier three, which would be at the same rate as the, as the fourth tier for residential. This is so that outdoor water use is priced as outdoor water use.
Can just interrupt you a second there, your one inch per week is also, there's an assumption based in there that mother nature is gonna provide a half inch.
Correct.
So it's not every resident out there, one inch of water from their sprinkler each week.
Right.
It's basically a half inch of water.
Right, right, on average.
Cause you're assuming, assuming mother nature provides a half of that.
Exactly, yep, yep, in a, in a drought situation.
We need to be clear on that, that, uh.
Might be problematic, but, yeah. Um, okay, so for residential units greater than four, I, I noted that we've, we set these tiers up differently, um, than for the smaller residential. So these are, you know, mostly apartment buildings, which, uh, maybe don't have a lot, a lot of outdoor watering. So we looked at, looked at the usage, the bills, and try and set it up where, um, eighty percent, eighty-one percent of winter bills and seventy-five percent of summer bills would be captured at this, within this first tier at twenty thousand gallons. And then ninety-nine percent of winter bills and summer bills would be captured through tier three. So again, we don't anticipate any water use in this, um, tier, but it's there because, um, given the situation, um, the city needs to, you know, be able to really send a message about, about water use. So, um, coincidentally, well, not coincidentally, this, these tiers are sized the same as the commercial, um, tiers that I'm gonna show you in a moment. And that's because in some cities, commercial and single-family resi- or, commercial and multifamily residential. in some cities, commercial and single-family res, or, commercial and multifamily residential are treated the same way. Because resident, these multifamily users are, is residential water use, um, we feel that it should be treated as residential water use, but we did size the blocks in the same way. So here, we're showing the non-residential water use, essentially commercial. The tier blocks are set up the same size as the multifamily residential, like I just mentioned, but we did price these a little bit differently, uh, because, um, you know, the peaking factor I noted was less, it was 1.6 versus 3.2, or even 2.0 for the multifamily. This means that a, a lot of these users just are, are using the water they need to use to run their business. There's some irrigation going on there, but not to the degree that we see in the residential user classes. And so for that reason, we, we, um, set the, the difference in price between tiers smaller than we did for the residential water users. The second, um, half then of the non-residential discussion is this, this constant block that, um, I mentioned earlier, where for users that consistently use more than 80,000 gallons per month in the winter, um, we suggest that a constant block is perfectly appropriate for those folks. We priced it the same as the, the second tier, I believe, yep, for the, the other, um, non-residential users. The other thing about this, um, recommendation is we also suggest that for these, um, users, that an irrigation meter be required, so you can be sure that they're not irrigating, um, at the constant block rate. So, this table shows a summary of the recommended 2020 water rates, um, with the fixed charges by size here, um, the different tiers for the different types of users here, and then the rates, um, along the side here. So, it's always helpful to understand, um, you know, you look at your revenue requirements, you look at your projected water sales, and you, you come up with, you know, an understanding of what you need to do for your rates, you know, like it or not. But, what's often useful is to say, well, how does this, what are other people doing? Are other people in the same situation? How do we compare? And so, we do annually a rate survey, and what we're showing here is, this, this is 2019 data for everybody except for you here. This is your 2019 charge for 6,000 gallons of water, shows how you compare with, um, other users in the state. And so you were in a pretty good position, uh, you know, again, it's not to say that it's cheap, because, um, you know, we don't, it's, it's money, it's, it's real dollars to people. But what we show here is that even if no one else increased their rates in the state in 2020, Brandon would still be, you know, in the middle of the pack. You wouldn't be the highest in the state, you wouldn't be the lowest. Again, it's, it's real money, but it would, for a 6,000 gallon per month user, it would be a dollar forty cents per month increase. And again, like I said, we know a lot of these folks are doing projects, and are going to be increasing their rates, um, every year, and so, I think when we come out with our study in a couple months, um, our survey in a couple months, the, it will show that you're, you know, maybe, probably exactly where you are right now. Um, it's also useful to look at, you know, in terms of economic development, and not wanting to disincent businesses from locating in the community, you know, how does commercial water use, um, stack up? Because it's often priced differently, um, than residential water use. And so, we use, in, in our survey, we use an average monthly bill of 18,000 gallons. This is where you were in 2019. Um, if we, if you adopt the changes we've proposed, this is where that same commercial bill would come out at your 2020 rate. Again, a lot of these communities will likely increase their bills. So for an 18,000 gallon per month, um, commercial bill, the increase per month would be $2.87. So, if we take a, a look now at what that means in terms of revenue adequacy, um, here we're showing your 2020 budget, and then projections, um, for the next four years, just based on, um, an, an assumption of inflate, you know, 3% increase in inflation. The, the one thing I will note here is depending on which direction you go with your water treatment facility, some of these future O&amp;M charges out in 2023 and 2024 will vary depending on, on the chosen path. Um, this is a look at the existing capital improvements plan. Again, you know, there's a lot of unknowns out here. We know that, that the Water Development Committee has made a recommendation for scenario two B. And so, um, what I'm going to show you here is, is, um, based upon that for now, but certainly, um, that is, that is going to change. Uh, so, down at the bottom here, this is the projected debt service associated with, with these projects, um, the one, 1.3-ish million-dollar well, eight project, $5 million dollar water tower project, and then, um, scenario two B, um, with the, the well connection with WRT. In terms of reserves, um, you know, you're at a point in your utility where you're investing a lot in capital, and so, um, saving for capital reserves is, is not at the forefront of your mind, but it is something that, um, you, you do know is important as part of your financial plan, so that has been accounted for here. What we typically assume is that you deposit, um, you reinvest at least at the amount of annual depreciation in your system, which, uh, for last year was about $380,000. For your operating reserve, you, as a matter of policy, you like to keep 180 days of O&amp;M expense, so these assumptions have incorporated, been incorporated into, um, the revenue adequacy analysis. Debt reserve, we assume would not be required, because you would adopt a debt surcharge within your rates. Um, and then a rate stabilization reserve is just what we refer to as any revenue in excess of the targets for capital and O&amp;M reserve that you would use to soften, um, the need for rate increases from year to year. So this is a projection of future revenue requirements, um, based on, uh, plan, or, option two B, for the water treatment. And again, I, I want to, um, mention that the numbers used in the preliminary study associated with, um, these alternatives were very high-level planning costs, they included, um, you know, placeholders for, um, costs that are going to be, you're going to be defining, uh, further within the coming year, so. Total revenue requirements then, for 2020 are around 3 million. That is because you have planned, you've strategically planned to spend on some reserves in this year. So, um, that, that's, is a, it's not a bad thing, that's actually a good strategy. So if we look at total revenue requirements for the future, um, rate revenue requirements, it's about 1.9 in 2021 versus the 3 million this year with the, the planned reserve expenditures, and that increases over the years. The revenue adequacy model also accounts for some account growth at 2% per year, and growth in water sales. Just a quick note about the water sales growth, we, we, we link that to the anticipated account growth, but we also account for, um, an anticipated reduction that is associated with the increase in price. So for every 10% increase in water rate, we've reduced, um, the projected water sales by, by a percentage, just per industry guidelines. So, um, taking a look at future revenue requirements, this, I think I showed you most of these numbers a minute ago, but these are your total revenue requirements, 3.1 million for 2020. Again, you're planning to spend, um, some cash on that, so you don't need to recoup all of that through your rates. Projected ra, revenue is about 1.7 million, given the recommended, uh, rates. Now, you know, it's, we always want to look ahead and know what's coming next. So, like I mentioned, you've had a recommendation made, um, to go with a particular alternative, you're not certain where you're going to go right now, and so we wanted to give you a, some perspective on where the rates may need to go over the next few years, but that's something that you're going to need to decide, you know, nine months from now, um, not today. So this is just information, again, based on high-level planning estimates that we have made. So, if we look at the, the, um, really recommended rates for, for 2020, those will generate about a 12.8% increase in revenue. So these percentages are total revenue increases, not necessarily rate increases. Because again, I mentioned, um, the fixed component of debt surcharge, the volumetric component of debt surcharge, it's going to vary, um, how you generate that revenue, based on, uh, which choice y-you make going forward, and your, your projected costs. So, but under scenario two B, um, potentially looking at, you know, around 14% increases to get your rates to the level where you can cover debt service, and also provide coverage, 120% on that debt service. After you get it, by 2024, at this level, um, you would get your rates to where they needed to be, and, um, presumably, rate adjustments after that time, uh, would, would be less than this. Again, your CIP isn't developed that far out, so, you know, there would certainly, um, perhaps be some rate funded capital in there, but, um, this is, this is what we project for, um, alternative two B. If we take a look at the costs associated with alternative two C, it's closer to a 17%, 16 to 17% increase, um, for several years, and scenario two D, um, around a 19% increase in revenue annually, not necessarily, um, rates. Again, that is just to give you just a, a high-level look ahead, um, it's not something that you would adopt today, but this will be part of your discussion and your consideration as you go through the next year. So, um, to close, um, our recommendations are that, um, to adopt the, the rates that we presented for 2020 to, to, um, continue to, your financial stability, and to start to plan for the future. As part of these changes to the suggested rates, well, you'll need to define your user classes, the residential of four units or less, the residential of greater than four, and so on. We're suggesting that you establish a restricted debt surcharge fund, so when you collect that revenue, um, it's, it's, it's in a dedicated fund, and that way you can, um, revisit annually, and see how much you need to generate for the next year's debt payment. We're suggesting that you implement a fixed debt surcharge component of the rates next year, not this year, um, simply because, again, it's uncertain where you're going. We suggested a fixed O&amp;M increase, and so, um, stepping into that is, is, is a, a good idea. Also, taking a look annually at your fixed and volumetric debt surcharges to make sure that you're annually covering your debt requirements. Um, we're, we recommend you set some capital reserve funding goals, that you may or may not meet in the near term, as you're, you're, you know, investing in this infrastructure, but have those goals on the horizon, have the targets, um, so you have them as part of your plan. Educating your, your customers is going to be very important, as you know, um, going forward. You've done a really great job with your conservation program, so just continuing that, um, will, will be good. Educating folks on the basis for your rate setting, um, you know, what the water utility is doing, and why, um, and then just on your ongoing capital investment and renewal strategy, just letting them know you're, you're taking care of their infrastructure, um, you, you're making prudent decisions to, to preserve it, and, uh, keep it working at its level of service long into the future. Lastly, um, you will have this rate model that we put together for you, taking a look at this annually will be very important. We never want you to, um, update it, and then set the rates, you know, for two or three years, and not look back. You're going to want to be using this as a tool. It's a very good tool for you in your plan, in your budget planning, in your capital planning, and so on. And that's all I had, unless you have any questions for me today. Thank you. Thank you.
This time I'd look for a motion to, uh, approve our water rates as, as laid out by AE2S for 2020 in resolution 03-20.
I'll move.
Motion is second to approve the water rates as recommended by AE2S. Comments, questions, of the council?
So if you're a standard user, average user, 4,000 gallons, right? Okay, so, with the changes, that's going to be a dollar forty, right? Per month, a dollar forty per month, okay? So sometimes these percentages look really big, because they're on a really small base. So I think we just need to keep that in mind, that a dollar forty i-is what we're looking at, for the average person, someone like me.
A dollar forty goes all the way up to 12,000, so that's even three times the average user. So I think there's a lot of leniency in there, and it's really designed to catch that excessive use, like, that was mentioned.
Correct, that's what I was going to point out, that anybody up to 12,000, 12,000 gallons of u-utilization in the city of Brandon is going to see an increase of $1.40, if you use 12,000 gallons or less. If you use 18,000 gallons, you're going to see an increase of $8.29 a month. 24,000 gallons, you're going to see an increase of $15 a month. So it's, we're trying to implement our conservation practices into, into our water rates. In addition to that, I think the key too, is we're investing a whole bunch of money, folks, into infrastructure for our water. Just the three things that, uh, AE2S outlined there, the well number eight of 1.3 million, the water tower of 5 million, and a water treatment plant anywhere from 15 to 25 million. We have in excess of $30 million of infrastructure, I'll call it, upgrades to our water. So, water rates are not going to stay the same. Uh, we need to improve, uh, all this infrastructure, and it's, it all costs money, so I think these rates are very reasonable, and we have a well-laid-out plan for the future, and, and, proceed as, as we are. Any other comments, questions from the council?
I just have a couple things. The water rates will go into effect on February, just because staff has some work to do to get these changes. We haven't had a tier rate that I know of since I've been here, so we do have some work to do in the system to, to get that. We are shooting for the February 2020 bill, so that's what we're intending to do. The sewer surcharge will decrease the January bill, so we will get that one on the January bill, that one's fairly easy to do, so, just, um, note that as well.
Right, we do need some time to implement those changes.
So are we saying then, if we go up a doll, for the, again, the average user, go up a dollar forty in water, but we go down a dollar for sewer? Can you do that? I mean, I mean...
No, because the, the volumetric charge in sewer increased. We, we didn't do that this year, because we set that resolution last year for the next three, four years? Four years.
But we still are going down a dollar.
Correct. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for all your work on that, that was very helpful.
Need a, motion to approve, uh, RFP for new water treatment plant, speaking of water treatment plants.
Yeah, but this, this is one of the projects that Miranda alluded to, that, that could have a, an impact on the rates in the future. This is a proposal for preliminary design or facility plan for upgrading the water treatment plant. As we go through that process, you know, we'll be looking at sizing it, uh, the, the recommendations from AE2S was basically double the size. The big question that's going to come down the road at some point in time during this process is, do you want to soften the water or not? And if you do want to water, soften the water, what type of process do you want to use? So all those questions will be answered, well addressed, as we go through this, this part of the process.
Who to approve the RFP?
Motion is second to approve the RFP for a new water treatment plant, preliminary design. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any new business from the council, or administration? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:30.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn at 7:30 PM. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.